Okay, everyone, we'll begin our meeting with the pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda for this evening, we schedule for at 7:00 to have a public hearing. Public hearing is being held for questions and comments for residents regarding the town's FY 2016 community block grant, wetlands park parking lot and trail expansion. Public hearing was advertised in Carroll County Times on February the 1st, 2016. Are there any questions or comments for anyone in the audience regarding this agenda item? Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing will be closed and will be brought back up during our regular council meeting. Okay. At this time, we'll go through our regular agenda. We'll open our meeting with, I hope everybody's had a chance to read over the minutes and operating statements for our last couple of meetings. If so, we're in line for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, January 11, 2016 work session minutes, December 21, 2015 council meeting minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for December 2015.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, are any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes, motions carried? Okay, first thing we have on our here was Marion Ware for Community Media Center, and Marion will not be here this evening. She called me earlier this afternoon and said that she is ill, would not be able to make it. So I guess we'll go down to your Carroll, we'll go down to Carroll, Carroll County, Carroll Regulatory Commission, and we'll let you have the floor.
Okay, well, I was just-
You'll come over to the mic, because we are being taped tonight.
Okay. I was just here in case anybody had any questions about the franchise rule. I know there were several questions, I think I spoke to the town attorney, and I know we've addressed the CMC's concerns, I think. We didn't know if you had any questions regarding that.
I don't, at this time, I don't know whether the council has any questions. We discussed it at our workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago, and our representative on the cable committee, Sarah Black, came and addressed us that evening and gave us some of her comments and concerns, reference to that. And I think what I'm hearing from our council is that they are, they, at this time, if I'm wrong, correct me, that they're not in agree, agreeing, agreements with having to delay it another 90 days.
Okay.
Is that what I understand from the council, that regarding from what you heard from Mrs. Black and what we've read over the report, they're not willing to give extension on the agreement, and I don't know whether the commissioners have voted on anything yet or not.
Commissioners have voted, not last week, but the week prior, and they voted to approve the franchise.
As written?
As written.
Okay.
Carol, when you say the CMC's in agreement now, you've addressed their concerns, are they in agreement?
Well, I believe they sent, did they send a letter out Friday? Did you get that?
I didn't see that.
Okay, I think they sent out a letter, we met with them last week. I still think that they have concerns, of course, but I think that we're trying to work together to maybe make some changes to the IGA, to make them a little bit more comfortable. Mark Ritter is putting a plan together for the transmission links, so that was another one of their concerns. But as far as the 85 cent subscriber fee, there's really nothing that we can do financially to help them anymore than what we are, we're just a pass-through.
Okay.
Well, are they now not seeking the deferral?
I'm, I don't know if they are, but I know that we're working with them. I have to, I don't have the letter with me, I thought she had sent it out to all the towns from Steve Kirby, the chairman, but we're working with them to try to ease their concerns. They didn't come up with any specific concerns for us, except those few that we addressed. So we're, we think that we're almost on the same page.
Okay, and CMC, are they comfortable with that now, or you're not, you're not sure what Marion and her group wanted to?
I'm not really sure that they're completely comfortable with it, but I mean, from the CRC standpoint, we, we're very comfortable with it. We've already looked at the trend in St. Maryland nationwide, as far as pay goes, but I mean, we're looking at the bigger picture, we have to look at the whole contract, and we had to really work hard with line extensions that affect the county residents, not too much the town, but, so I think we feel very pleased with the contract.
I know some of the, from, you know, we had a mayor's convention last week, I think some of the other mayors were talking about that they thought that they were gonna, they thought their councils were gonna grant the extension. If, what if you have a couple of the towns that don't grant the extension, you know what may happen then? If the county agrees to the contract, I mean?
Well, county agreed, Westerns was voting tonight, Anchesters was voting tonight, and our, we're voting to go forward. I think Sikesville's voting to go forward tonight as well.
And no further extensions? Okay.
No, it has to be a majority.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're going through, and we have, we meet on Thursday, I believe, because of the weather, we got delayed in one or two jurisdictions.
Right.
So, but I think we're gonna vote to approve it in the March, our March meeting, which is like the second day of March.
Okay. Okay. Anyone on the council have any questions for Carol? Okay.
Do you, you don't need a vote from the town, do you?
Yes.
So what is the vote?
You have to agree to, you have to vote to.
Agree to the franchise agreement, but not the deferral, you don't need a vote?
If you wanted to defer it, then Sarah Black would have to request it, but as of, as of today, no town has requested an extension.
Okay.
Well, I think from, you know, when Sarah addressed us a couple of weeks ago at our work session, I think the council was in agreements that they weren't in favor of any more extensions, and so I'm not speaking for the council, you know, I think if-
That's what we're agreed for.
If that's what they're comfortable with, we're ready to make a vote tonight on the-
Will that be great?
So you need a motion to accept the franchise agreement that the county's approved?
Yes. For the CCR, is it the CRC recommended, or?
CRC, yes, recommend, recommended, and we have a copy, I guess it's a complete copy of that. It's some numbers here, and we can't really make them out, but we do, we had a copy of it that we went over that night at our meeting, and I'll have it with me.
So I make a motion that we accept the agreement, the franchise agreement that the county's already approved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I've taken it.
And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes, okay, motions, council has agreed to accept the franchise agreement.
Okay, we'll start today, shortly.
Okay.
For signature. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, under, we'll go back under the mayor's report, and now we will discuss the, we're up for a vote on the resolution. And that ref is through the Department of- Yes, Community Block Grant for Wetlands Park and Trail Expansion. Donald, you have anything you want to speak on that with?
It looks, it looks good to me, it's, it's, once we finish up with this grant, it's gonna, our trail should be completed, as far as what I have in a mall inside the park, paid, paid outside the park, so I'm satisfied.
Okay. Do you, you don't have numbers on what we're getting on the two grants, I never discussed that last month, but I don't have those, they're probably in minutes.
No, I don't either. I've got this one here for the, it's $60,000. But I don't have the others on top of my head, and-
Okay.
Jerick's not here, he doesn't have them, so, but we do have enough money to finish it.
Okay.
With the help of Lehigh furnishing some equipment and furnishing all the stone for us.
All right, we need a motion to approve the resolution, and we'll pass on this if we-
I'll make a motion, then we approve the resolution for the CDBG program.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes, motions carried? We'll get that, I guess John's got the original over there. You have the original, or just-
I watched a scribble on it.
Or Don has the original?
Don's got the original.
Okay, under some other information, like I said, last week, we did have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we had mayor's convention in Ocean City, and a few things were discussed. I'm just gonna go with some real quick. One of the, one of the things that Maryland Municipal League is bringing forth this year, one of our priorities, is that we know we're probably gonna get some more money in highway user fees, and POS funding, POS funding is going to be still there, but what we're proposing, and one of the proposals this year, is for the highway user fees revenue, we're proposing legislation that will enact a bill that we will know what we're gonna get from year to year, so that we know how to plan when our budget's coming up, rather than waiting until the last minute, we're gonna, we're asking, and I don't know how it's gonna, you know, when it gets into the House or whatever, but we're asking for some proposals that will give us some predictability, so, and make it stable, so we know each year what we're gonna get, rather than, you know, $8,000 and maybe get 20 or whatever, but some predictability, so that we know how to prepare our budgets from year to year. Right now, there seems to be a lot of support for that bill, so we'll just have to, when they start having hearings, we'll have to see how that's gonna go, but right now, it looks pretty good. This summer, when you go to the MML conventions, if no one has done it, when you see the opens meeting laws come up on some training, within the next year or so, every council member is to have open meetings law training, so when you see those, that training come up for your summoners down there, try to get it this year, next year, but they're gonna make it so that everybody has to, everybody's gonna have to have that. We're keeping a good eye on, it's another bill coming up on pesticides that can be used in parks and open areas, so we're trying to keep an eye on that to see, they could start talking about spraying and whatnot, so that we know what's gonna go on there. There's some legislation going in for a deposit, a bottle deposit bill, and also for bag deposits. We don't know how that's gonna turn out, but there's some legislation going in for that from different communities and within the state of Maryland, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. We had a very interesting meeting on, I guess it was Friday morning, we had two of the general speakers for that morning, one was Speaker Miller, and the other was Speaker Bush. Speaker Bush, as far as I'm concerned, was very, very out of control. All he did for 15 minutes was sit there and bash the governor for what he was doing and how he was doing things. I thought it was very inappropriate, not only myself, but there were 62 other mayors at the convention that we all seemed to think the same thing, so it's just something we're gonna have to deal with, doesn't look like it's gonna get any better. That's about the highlights of it, the governor did announce that this past year, they added 55,000 new jobs in the state of Maryland, so that's a plus for the state, and so, other than that, it's April, or February the 16th next week, in the House, the bill's gonna come up again, or it's gonna come up, yeah, it's coming up for the House again, they're gonna talk about the mandatory sprinkler ordinance, and our delegation seems to think that it's probably not even gonna come out of committee, which I hope it doesn't, so we're gonna have to watch that bill and see how that acts, and what's gonna happen there. But other than that, I just have, they have some land use bills that's coming up, Senate Bill 166, we have to keep an eye on, and other than that, there's just a lot of little small things, we've got some more information on some other possible state grants, the way you can get some state grants without a whole lot of work behind it, I have the ladies' information here. So, other than that, it was a pretty productive, the, everybody thinks you go down there, you have a good time, but our meeting started at 7:00 in the morning and not 8:00 or 9:00, we met at 7:00, and we were working breakfasts, so 7:00 in the morning, you see people come in, they're not really awake yet, which doesn't bother me, because I'm an early riser, I would rather have them get started early and get over early. Thursday evening, the highlight, the one thing that we've done with the Mayor's Association since they've started back in the 90s, we do do one night, Thursday night, we'd have a reception at the governor's mansion, hosted by him and his wife, and I've gone with every governor since we started this program back in the early 90s, and Governor Hogan and his wife, they are the first two, for the two hours that were there, have ever spent the whole two hours with us. She greets us when we come in the door, she comes in and she, she mingles with the crowd, he mingles with the crowd, he gets pictures taken, he talks to everybody, Lieutenant Governor's there, and the last two years out of, ever since they started in the 90s, this is the first time the governor has ever spent the entire time with us. All the other governors we had, even Governor Earl, they rush in, they rush out, and you're there by yourself, while the reception is theirs, hosted to give to us, and they're not there, but I must give it to Governor Hogan, he and his wife have been very good hostess, host, and they stayed with us the whole time. So it's a one-on-one conversation with a lot of people, he doesn't, rushes in, rushes out, and, you know, it's, it's a very good evening, so I think every year, we have a few more mayors to attend, and it's, I think they really get something out of it, especially last year and this year, when you can stand there and rub elbows with the governor, and he's not in any hurry to just rush you in there and get you out, so that means a lot for our governor, and we can really see a difference, and hopefully that, you know, through the, through the municipalities, there's 157 municipalities, and when we go down there, we're nonpartisan, so that's the good thing about it, we're not like our other elected officials down there, and most of us down there, we don't know whether the other person's a Republican or Democratic, never comes up, we're down there to take care of business that's for the municipalities, and I think it's been working great, and hopefully it 'll continue that way. That's about all that I have right now, we're down to John's report.
Okay, I want to follow up on our American Tower lease extension discussions that we've been having, and I will remind you, you mentioned the open meetings law, Mayor Jones, and the council would be entitled to go into closed session to discuss any of this, so we haven't done that, but it is a contract under negotiation, so if any point, anybody feels like we ought to consider that, then by all means, let me know. We got to this point by American Tower offering $30,000 to extend the lease up to the year 2071, right now, I think it expires in 2036. The town's counter was to also, in addition to the 30,000, seek the, the revenue sharing from 15% to 25% of the carriers above and beyond the first two. American Tower came back and said they weren't willing to do that, but they would increase the offer to 40,000, just a flat one-time $40,000 fee, and leave the revenue sharing the way it was, and the town then countered with 50,000 and no change in the revenue share, which is where we left off. You should have, I believe, a copy of the email I got from Jeff Crueth, who is the negotiating subcontractor for American Tower, and where, where he informs us that they are not willing to go to the 50,000. So I called Jeff, and I said, well, Jeff, where do we stand? Is there something in between? The issue, I've gotta go back to report to the council, and, you know, the issue is they're paying legal fees to go back and forth with this thing, and it seems to have gotten a little more complicated, because now there's other language in this proposed amendment, and I want to be able to express this to the council, so that they can decide exactly what they want to do next. Here's the story that I got, and again, in some ways, it's like dealing with a car salesman here, because he's not the guy with the ultimate decision-making, but he tells me that the 50,000 was met with approval by his immediate supervisor, I guess on the American Tower side, but it has to be approved through some sort of finance committee there, and that's where it was rejected, and, and he tells me it was budgeted originally for a maximum of 35,000, they decided to extend that to the 40, and not cover any attorney's fees, and have that sort of, part of the, the increase from 30 to 40 would have covered the attorney's fees, and that's where they are. So what he suggested, that he could reasonably resubmit, is going back to the 40 and adding the request for $3,000 in attorney's fees, so you were covered for that, which I think is reasonable, and, you know, if that doesn't fly, then I think we're probably gonna be at the 40. So that's something for council to consider, so I mean, at this point, we can have discussion on that, or you can take as much time as you want. Again, this is not affecting the current, you know, revenue payments, the current lease arrangement, so it's really looking out over a longer horizon to extend the lease.
Okay, council want to take some time to think about that, and maybe discuss it at work session, and then maybe bring it up to the next council meeting, or you wanna?
Is that too long a time?
Or you wanna, you feel comfortable making a decision on it now?
Well, I think that the, the financial part of it, we're pretty close, so it's not a big leap to, to approve that part of it. What's a little more discouraging is that they've got this long document, some of it would change our lease in ways that, number one, either we would not want to change it, or number two, would take a lot of time to figure out what the differences are, you know, why they're seeking to make changes, in a lease that's held up all these years that was negotiated, you know, when it was signed, you know, so many years ago. So the number might be only part of the deal, now what he told me is, I can send you a Word document, and you can redline out all the, the language that you don't want, but I don't know what we're in for when it goes to the American Towers attorneys, that's easy to say, you can go ahead and cross everything out, make it look the way you want it, but, but I don't, I don't know how much back and forth that, that we're in for, and I guess we won't know until we get to the number, and then we see whether, you know, it's acceptable. And one of the things I tried to put in the memo that I sent you last month, was they wanted to not have to come back to the town to get approval of additional sub-tenants or changes in sub-leases, and we've always been careful to, we've always approved them in the end, but we've always been careful to have to see them and approve them, so that, because, you know, the town's got a direct interest in those, in the revenue sharing on those leases, that's not something that I would recommend, I mean, it would be up to council to decide, but that, I wouldn't recommend a change like that, but it's in there, so some of that stuff is gonna have to be looked at and maybe negotiated. But in terms of going back with the number, Don, I, I think that, you know, if you're comfortable with it, that's something that we're not really-
I'm comfortable with it, but why don't you just find, do all the little ifs and ands in there?
Well, the way that would work is, we, we get to the number, which would be this 40,000 plus 3,000 in costs, and then we'd send them, I'd, I'd tell them, if that works, send me the Word document, and I'll start editing that.
Okay.
And, you know, if they accept it right away, that's not a huge project, it's not that hard to delete language, but it's when you start bouncing back and forth, and there's a lot of language in that, if you saw the agreement, the council probably didn't take a lot of time on the agreement itself, but, I mean, it's a long, fine print document that has a lot of information in it that really isn't necessary, and it's probably something they've developed over time, that's one-sided, you know, looking out for the tower company, and-
But he's not willing to leave the contract the way that it is, with the 40,000 plus the 3,000.
Well, he's not the legal department.
But I mean, right, but-
So what he's saying is, if we can come to a number, I'll send you the Word document, you take out what you don't want in it for the town, and, and we'll submit that to the legal department.
So the only thing that should be in that Word document is that we're good for $40,000 plus the legal fees, we're granting them the extension on the lease, that's the only thing that's changing.
That would be ideal.
That's, that's, that's all we had talked about, but nothing else was of any interest to us.
Well, in fairness to them, even going back to the offers that they made two or two years ago or so, they've always wanted the right of first refusal on a buyout, because they're afraid that somebody else gets control of the tower, that's not good for them, gets control of the revenue, so now they own a tower, but we've given up our rights for somebody else to collect it. Now they can come to the town, if they have an issue, they can come to the town and work with the town on the issue, whatever that might be, and, and they're afraid that they would lose some of that, because now the revenue stream would be owned by somebody else if the town sold it. So I just get the sense that that one is gonna, we're gonna have to deal with, with that concern on their part, that's one of the things they've been trying to get.
But if the town sold it, wouldn't they, whoever buys it be bound by the contract that we have with the existing, if we're selling it, that's part and parcel of the sale?
Could be, could not be.
Yeah, well-
When you get legal, and it's, you know, it could go back and forth for years.
If we give up the right to control it by giving an easement, it's really like any other easement, it gives a third party a say in how it gets managed, certainly eliminates us from, as a player, in terms of reviewing leases, I mean, that would all be, actually, there's some good to that, because it would take us out of the management business and liquidate this thing as, for hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, I haven't thought through how it would work, I've talked to him about it, and I understand what they're trying to protect. They don't want a competitor or somebody else in the marketplace with an interest in their tower, dealing with their tenants, you know, they've got the town now, they've got the responsible party, we can control what goes on out there.
Well, I think we can probably pay us on the, the money part, and then, once we get the documentation, then we, you can work on that, I mean, this would be the first step.
Give me a chance to, to think about that a little more, because, because I'm not giving you a complete answer, but-
It just-
Have to think through what, easement document's gonna have terms and conditions to it, and, I mean, that would be another thing we'd have to see, if we went, you know, if we went down that-
It just seems to me that when they started this whole thing, the whole purpose was that they wanted to extend the lease, so they could get clients in the door to go on the tower, because everybody was looking at longer period leases than they had left on the tower. So if that's all they want to do, then I don't understand why they need to put all that other stuff in there. that other stuff in there if we agree to accept that amount of money to extend the lease like they want to.
Okay. And what I'm saying is that's fair as to everything else, but this right of first refusal thing has always been in their discussion as a secondary item. It's not like this is the first time we ever saw it. Everything else, it's the first time I've seen it. It was, surprised me how much detail was in there that had not been discussed. But the right of first refusal has been there back from the start. So I'm not saying we've agreed to it. I'm just saying it's, I think it's something that's important to them and he says it's important to them.
I see nothing wrong with going back to them with the forty thousand plus the legal fees and starting from there with what they think they want us to sign.
Hey, you got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And the rest of that was just, you know, somebody's got to earn a living somehow, writing up all these documents. So they got somebody on their side that wants to just keep dragging it on. So, so this is a first, this is a start. We got to go here and then, you know, the rest of that, we can sit here all night long and argue about. And it's not, one of us up here, other than John, knows the legal part of it.
Well, and I keep hearing from them what a tremendous revenue sharing deal that we have on that tower. And I think that's true. And that's why they seem to want to get whatever they can out of this, you know, negotiation.
Okay. So is there one agreeable to the forty thousand and the three thousand attorney's fees? We can make a motion on that tonight and pay us on that and then, so where to start?
I make a motion that John go back to the, what do we call them? American Tower, is that who it is?
Yeah.
With our proposed price of forty thousand plus the three thousand attorney fees so we can get the documentation started.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Are you none? All those in fair eyes?
Hi.
Hi.
Those, motion's carried. Okay.
Then when you get that documentation, you bring it back to the town for us to look at it, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Is that how it works?
We always have.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. And that's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to back up to my report just a little bit. I forgot something. I could have done it through committee reports, but we're in the process of doing our budget. And I talked to Don last week, just to let you know, we are looking at where it would bring us if we would have a five cents tax increase. We have some maintenance problems in the town. It has to be done. And with the money that we are losing, we're losing twelve thousand a year in the agreement we have with the county for the stormwater management stuff that we take out of our budget that we normally get. And looking at the five cents, we're just roughly figuring because we're not sure what the tax, what tax revenue is going to be until we get that. But Don's thinking it could be somewhere between maybe twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, which is still taking twelve thousand dollars off of that. Just to let you know, we're going to have figures when we have our budget meetings of things like that. Five cents doesn't really give you a lot of money and we have people that are always criticizing us because we're not getting things done in town. So you either got to let it deteriorate and fall apart or you got to raise taxes and pay for it. So it just gives you something to think about. We'll have some numbers. I'm trying to figure out what the five cents is going to do to people's taxes, how much of an increase.
Are you talking real estate or personal?
Real estate. We did have a, you know, the commissioners dropped the taxes a couple of years ago, which really didn't help us that much. I think over the years they dropped it, I think it was three and a half or four cents, something like that total. The last board and what that amounted to in a year's time, you couldn't have taken your spouse out one night for a dinner. I think it was totally ridiculous to reduce the taxes to that time for thirty, forty, fifty dollars a year for a person's taxes. It helps, but it sure put them in a bind. And now it's putting the rest of us in a bind because their reducing theirs also reduces the amount that the towns get. Some of the other towns increased taxes last year. One of our neighboring towns increased ten cents. We definitely don't want to do that. I don't think we could afford to do that. But if you look at the numbers, five cents is, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money. And I think you have to look at the things that have to be done around town.
And when was the last time taxes were increased? Because it's been at least over ten years.
Yes.
Because I've been here ten or eleven and it was, it hasn't been changed since I've been here.
It's been a long time. If I'm not mistaken, I think probably the last time we did anything with taxes, we probably dropped the taxes. And I'd have to look back through the minutes, but we've, it's been a long time since we've done anything with taxes. Yeah. So just give me something to think about.
I mentioned that months ago.
All right?
I mentioned that months ago that we're going to have to look at the issue.
Yeah. So, you know, we're going to do the best we can. We thought, Don and I thought once, two cents. And the only thing you're doing is putting a Band-Aid on, you do two cents now, you're going to come back a year or so later and you're going to do another two cents. So why not do the five cents? And, I mean, we're still not going to make a lot of money, but at least we can start to do some maintenance around town. And some people think it's not important, but we've got a community center building up there that we're either going to have to fix it and maintain the building. Some, it's been suggestions years ago about closing it up. But everybody knows when you close up a building, only thing you do is let it deteriorate. So, and it's a nice building. I think we have to, and I know we've advertised in our newsletter, we do have people coming back and renting it. But, you know, when we raised the price of it years ago, twice as what it was for rental, we hurt ourselves because we had some people that left and went to Terry Rubelon's club to rent. And you play heck getting those people back. So we've got a nice building there. We've got to maintain that. And there's a couple of other things in town that need to be done. So just something to think about. So when we start our budget deliberations, we'll have it. February twenty-ninth, we were planning on having a budget meeting, a workshop, because we have five Saturdays, or five Mondays this month. So it's next Monday night, if everybody can make it.
The twenty-ninth, at what time?
Seven o'clock. Or you want to go at six-thirty? Six-thirty, that way we can maybe.
Twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Get in and get started and we won't keep you here all night. Okay. Public comments and concerns. Only thing I have, you know, I think you're part of the public, you're also employee county. I think between you and Stan Bowles and everybody else, you did one heck of a job cleaning snow out around this town. I don't care, a lot of people might think there was problems, but I think the amount of snow we had, you'd done one heck of a job, you and Stan Bowles and everybody else that helped. I mean, it was great. I mean, we were dug out a lot quicker than some other towns. So.
Once you got a damn four-wheel drive.
And I think, I think one thing that really helped was when the governor put a state emergency on Friday afternoon and asked people to stay off the road unless it was in emergency. And left people, they got smart, they stayed home and the snow crews could get out and do what they had to do. So that was, that was a big help. Brian, you want to go now?
Sure.
All right. Keeping up with the town and what's going on with it? As of right now, for January, we handled sixty-one calls for service in town. With that, it was up from last month from fifty-six for January, I should say. So breakdown of that was two assaults, one, I apologize, two burglaries, four thefts, two burglaries from vehicles, one fraud, four suspicious conditions, one alarm call, three vandalisms, four disturbances. One sexual offense, two building checks, one accident non-injury, twenty-one traffic stops, one parking problems slash assist motorists, six civil matters, non-criminal, three check welfare, medical, and three all other. So that's what we handled in town for January.
You said it was twenty-one traffic stops?
That's correct.
Okay. That's, I think that's good.
Yeah. So we got to keep the public aware of what they're doing.
I see them, not just you, but I see the other deputies in town with some of the traffic stops. And I think it keeps people aware that you are around and you're present and I think that's great. You're not always going to get everybody and you can't be here twenty-four-seven if you did have a full-time force. But I do see a big difference in traffic.
Well, we appreciate that and we'll keep trying what we're doing. But we got some things in the works and I discussed it with you a little bit today, but we'll see what we can do for bringing the more community policing out here as well. So, all right?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with committee reports then. Ellen?
Oh, boy. I had fun. I attended the SWAC meeting earlier this month, the Solid Waste Advisory Council. They're working on their list of items to give toward, to the Board of County Commissioners for long-term recommendations to deal with our solid waste issues.
Not to be critical of that committee, but are they making any progress other than just arguing back and forth?
Dusty and some of the members will be at the county commissioners' meeting on the eighteenth of this month at ten, ten forty to present this to the commissioners. And then it's up to the commissioners to decide where to go from there. The purpose of this advisory council, it's kind of different from the other one I'm on. It's to work with the Department of Public Works on the solid waste issues. Okay? You had the beginning back in like two thousand seven when the original, well, the revised EAC committee went through and did that big report that Sheriff Horosko gave to the county commissioners and nothing happened. And then you had, they did, the board of, or the EAC did another one and nothing happened. And then they had the, there's like two reports out there. And then they just recently had the KCI report, which it kind of tied in with what they tasked us to do. And our job is, as this advisory council, is to provide recommendations and then after the recommendations are decided upon, then go help the solid waste bureau figure out how to.
Implement it.
Implement for waste, lack of a better word. Let's see what happens after this meeting because up until this point, I would say Their long-term recommendations are moving toward implementing hauler districts in the county. Explore ways to add value to our recycles, county or contractor takeover recycling, incentivize haulers, MRFs, which are resource parks is the best way to say it, phase out single stream and mandates, which nobody likes. I like this one. I really like this one. It's, much as I told them that they really don't have any say in what the towns do, they're too encouraged, the municipalities to institute page-through programs.
There's some towns talking about doing it.
There's some towns that have talked about doing it. One town did do it at one time, I thought, but they're not doing it any longer. There are towns in Frederick County that have looked into it that they were all gung ho and now it's like, it's way back on the back burner, Boonsborough and Middletown, Move towards more composting. They're, they're going to be, let's see here. Somewhere around here, they talked about the changing of the fee. Ah, here it is. They're talking about raising the tipping fee. Currently, it's either sixty or sixty-two, I forget which. And the Bureau, Dusty was talking about raising it to sixty-six, a one-time raise. When they spoke with the commissioners, they decided that they're going to raise it to, what they're proposing is raise it to sixty-four with a one-dollar increase over the next four years until it gets to sixty-eight dollars a ton. There's a public hearing on the twenty-fifth of February for that. They talked about this Senate Bill one oh five two, which started out as renaming the, what is that thing? The waste. The solid waste, there's a, there's a.
Waste to energy? That was a long time ago.
No, this is some, the Waste Authority or whatever, renaming it. It was supposed to rename it so that they could do more things than they were doing. There kind of supposed to be some kind of assistance for the different counties to help them implement things that, and I forget what he called it. But it went in one way and then they changed it and went back and forth and back and forth. And if it gets approved the way it is now, it's doing a lot more than just changing their So basically, those are most of the things that they're talking about, talking to the commissioners about in their presentation that will be on, when I say the eighteenth. The EAC is, has put out information for their, their environmental awards. Environmental awareness awards, they give them every two years. They're given to individual schools, businesses. I don't know who all, oh, here it is. Individual institutional agricultural business and students. And the students includes K through twelve and college. And these awards are to recognize people who are doing things to provide environmental stewardship. One year, there was a high school or a school somewhere that did a composting thing at the school that got it. Businesses that have become more environmentally friendly and are doing more recycling and lowering their use of electricity and all that kind of stuff. Do you have them here? Do you have any printed here?
I brought them up last week or week, last week, I guess, was, gave me a whole packet for them.
Right. And they can also, you can also go onto the website to nominate people. So, and it's, it's, it's an interesting thing. Some of the, some of the things that come through there are very interesting to hear Other than that, I have EAC meeting later this month and then our, we did not have a, our MML Communications Committee because of the wonderful white stuff. So our next one will be on February twenty-fourth. And they're still looking for people to read essays in, I believe it's in April. The essays need to be in by, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think we have a poster out in the front door that says, when the fourth graders need to have their essays in to MML, not to the teachers, to MML. I think that's about all I have.
Okay. Laura?
I do plan to talk to the girl, to the fourth graders coming up for the If I Were Merit contest. I haven't gotten to them yet, so.
Awesome.
So. I had the, I turned the breakers off for the Christmas lights, had Potomac Edison come and turn the lights. I had the, uh, I turned the breakers off for the Christmas lights, had Potomac Edison come and, um, turn the lights off, and then they're already down. I was very impressed. They were down before the blizzard. So I was very impressed about that. I did receive a call on one of our lights on Main Street, one of the decorative lights that is off and on, kind of diagonal from original, um, towards Methodist Church. That's not working properly. And then I did have a snow call, and I gave Donald's number to them. And that's all.
Edgar?
Getting back to the, the community center, a couple weeks ago, we had furnace problems. Hopefully, we got them taken care of. Leon and I'll be working on, uh, trying to get some fundraisers to raise money and going to try to get some grants to redo the center up there. We had a price at one time, about a year and a half ago, which was almost sixty thousand dollars to do what we want to do up there, so it's not going to be a cheap project to do. The problem that we have is there's no insulation in the walls. And when it gets cold weather out and the wind blows, the air just comes through them walls, and, and the furnace just runs to death. So, so we need to do something to eliminate this large fuel bills. And, uh, so as it will progress, we'll have to get some, some newer prices so we can get an idea of what we got to come up with to, uh, do this project.
Donald?
Okay. Mr. Black, I want to thank you also for your hard work in the snow. And Stan Bowles did an outstanding job. I know, uh, Opie would probably got to the point where he would cringe when I would call him. I called him so many times. I came downtown numerous times. I'd like to thank Lehigh for allowing me to come down and, uh, continue monitoring, uh, the snow removal. It, it cost us thousands and thousands of dollars. But overall, you have your normal complaints. But in general, the people of the town was pretty good. They understood the, uh, this heavy a snowfall that you can only put it so, so many places. So we did do it on the crossroads, came back and, and, uh, and cleared it. And also, Lehigh sent some of their equipment out and removed, uh, some of the roadways, so we'd like to thank that also. And speaking of Lehigh, I'd like to read this letter that I received from, uh, the plant manager. The Lehigh Cement Company Plant in Union Bridge, Maryland, is pleased to announce it has earned the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA's prestigious Energy Star certification for twenty fifteen. This is the third consecutive year the Union Bridge Plant has received the Energy Star certification, which signifies that the plant performs in the top twenty-five percent of cement plants nationwide for energy efficiency and meets strict energy efficiency performance levels set by the EPA. Here at the Lehigh Cement Plant in Union Bridge, we remain committed to operating in a safe and environmental responsible manner, said Kent Martin, the plant manager. Earning the Energy Star certification again this year is a great honor. It is a direct result of our holistic approach to managing our energy uses. Our team is very proud to once again be recognized, the EPA, for our continued superior energy performance. Lehigh has been the outstanding neighbor of this town, so I really can't say enough about them. They've always been there to help us out, and we greatly appreciate it.
They deserve a lot of credit. They've done a lot of hard work out there, and it's showing off.
And that's, uh, the, uh, another little tidbit. The, uh, Belt Line is, uh, going on schedule, and it's, uh, as anyone can go up on the website and, and can, uh, can follow it. Of course, this weather has slowed us down a little bit, so everything's looking good.
Amy?
The town sewer contractor fixed a leak on Penrose Street last week. It was fixed within a couple hours. I did receive four phone calls. And, uh, God bless Stan Bowles for coming out and putting some salt down. It was, it was necessary because it was very cold and the water was running. Also, I am meeting with a representative from the Fire Hall for prospective dates for the Drug Awareness Expo, which is to be held in the fall if the dates are available. And, uh, just a shout out to Deputy Calusi for helping with that and also keeping this town in check because he does a lot behind the scenes that we here on the council don't even see, and I think it's pretty tremendous. Thank you.
And I think going back to the snow, the biggest thing is that, you know, it started snowing on Friday, and I know Donald's phone started ringing off the hook. You know, people just have to be a little bit patient, you know, don't start calling him on Friday evening, wait until Sunday or Monday. You know, when the crews have time to get out there, because, you know, plow all you want on Friday this year, and come Saturday morning, you're right back to zero. So, you know, just everybody be a little patient. This isn't the first time Stan Bowles has plowed snow for us, and hopefully it won't be their last, and I think they've done an excellent job. And like I say, with them and, uh, Kenny helping us out and the contractors that we had haul and snow did a very excellent job, so. Hopefully, it doesn't have another recurrence next week.
I have to add my comments to that, Perry, because I actually traveled to Frederick to go to work. And I didn't go to work till Fri, till Wednesday, so Monday and Tuesday, I was here in Union Bridge. And I drove out of Union Bridge, and I drove to Frederick, and Union Bridge being such a small town and having such a small public works department, the roads were in so much better shape than Frederick. It was unbelievable. I think they did an awesome job.
Yes, I think so.
It was a team effort. Right, Kenny?
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for us to say? Okay, our next council meeting will be February the twenty, well.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, next council meeting's February the twenty-second because we are delayed because of our snow date last month. So, uh, hearing nothing else, we're in line for adjournment.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All those in favor, rise?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, motions carried. Thank you very much.